All right, let's start the meeting. Six o'clock, February 3rd. I'm going to ask Councilmember Terrence Fugazi to lead us in a pledge allegiance. Please remain standing for the invocation after that.
Ready, again. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item number 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting of the Agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Here.
Councilmember Marx?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Mayor Bozo?
Here. Moving on, Orders of the Day, we have none. Item 1.7. We have one employee introduction. Leanne will be introducing Gibran Mendoza. Thank you, Mayor.
I am the Councilwoman of the community. I'd like to introduce Gibran Mendoza, our guest. Gibran was hired at the end of the year as an employee candidate in the Division of Public Safety Services Department. Gibran has over 10 years of corporate and legislative experience. He applied to the position as a public health officer. He was recently appointed as a transportation officer for the 13th year of his work. He also likes to be a teacher and a social worker. For that, Gibran worked in both public service and medical. As a member of the community, he works on suspension charges, but he will grow in his ability to provide help when there is difficulty. He also has a special relationship with the community. In addition to his leadership in the community, Gibran has been a teacher, a doctor, a public health officer, and a resident of the community. Gibran has taken the role of superintendent since he was elected to the city's administration in the last year. He has served in various organizations, including the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. He has been a resident of the community's safety. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. He has been a resident of the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community's safety. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety. He has been a resident of the community. Gibran shared the responsibility of managing the community's safety.
This is different than that.
You missed, excuse me, you mentioned safe routes to schools. Daniel, could you speak a little bit at what the difference is between these two programs?
Yeah, we're, we're, really, um, this is, safe routes to school is a funding force to, to, um, in the projects, in the actual infrastructure, there's a specific, you know, a specific road design. This will be a citywide, um, citywide, um, road road safety plan, considering all of the number of segments in the city, which we could potentially do a safe route to school, object throughout this, um, as long as it's, um, safe route to school. As I said earlier, this citywide plan.
Okay, so I think you may have answered my question in your explanation earlier, because I'm just wondering if we do this and we, we utilize this funding, are we then required to implement the plan? And if so, how is that paid for?
Um, this would be a plan to help us, um, prioritize projects and apply for grants, but, um, there would be a lot of obligation for us to, um, implement our project. We would just do a tool where we have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff?
Well, not for staff, I have a comment. At one time when we were looking at Plan Bay Area 2050, we were talking about it, some of, some of the improvements they were talking about was to do traffic calming on First Street and 10th Street, where they would take our four lanes and, and take us down to one lane and widen the bike lanes. And in reality, that doesn't calm traffic, it backs it up and it bottlenecked it. And I'm really concerned that by accepting this proposal, we are going to lock ourselves into, as you said, an implementation process. You talked about countermeasures, and I'm thinking, how do you take, um, First Street and calm it down without going down to one lane in each direction to make it more safe for pedestrians and bicycles? And as we know with all the building that's going on in Gilroy, that is going to have the opposite effect of moving traffic from the east to the west side and vice versa. So I would like to really know more about it before I approve it.
By name, um, so at this point, we haven't identified any specific projects, like you mentioned, the consumed with alleyway, accident, bad, and low, we said, in the air sections for a while, this is pretty, of what I've seen happen in other agencies that you had to go before, is wherever there's been pedestrian fatalities or, um, collisions with fatalities, those were the areas where, where they voted.
Perfect, okay.
It stops so much, um, of, um, traffic flow, making of the roads more efficient, it is, um, pedestrian safety, uh, vehicular safety. That's, you know, that's what happens. Specifically, they'll identify the 20 road segments and intersections, and they'll kind of pick which one is more dangerous. But, um, there's no, um, specific infrastructure that we selected at this point. So general study of every city, like I mentioned, most, I mean, counties and cities in California have road road safety protection fund. I would mention the city that would vote, you know, one of the last, you know, 10% of those particular instances that, that do not have a road road safety plan.
So in some of the cities that you've been in, what were some of the measures that they took to calm down traffic?
They are specific to each agency, like I remember I worked for, um, Hupa County, and that was very rural, so a lot of, um, rural, you know, it was, there were, um, guardrails because, you know, these roads and drains, you know, people were coming off the road and going down like conveyments. So one of the large components there was, uh, guardrails.
What about urban, what about urban cities?
In urban cities, you know, you have, like you mentioned, um, traffic calming, you could do, um, traffic circles, um, striping, bikeways, wider sidewalks, and you could do a hog system, um, hog systems, pedestrian crossings.
So now if you talk about wider sidewalks, then you're getting into your actual lane of traffic, right? Because there's only one place to go when you widen the sidewalk.
Well, it depends on right of way, there's a lot of factors that come into, and like inside blocks, if you have a 60-foot right of way or 100-foot right of way, you don't have that, um, key to the lane. Again, this is, this, um, this is not a very specific.
Right, right, right.
It's, it's data-driven, usually, um, there's very limited, um, public input, there is public input. Do they, uh, do they think about these type of plans, which have very, very projected? And, um, it is likely, like, they're analyzing access to that.
Right, I just want the public to really hear what you're talking about, and when you talk about access, um, then you could be going into someone's front yard to gain that access, correct? If you're not going to touch the roadway, you only have one other way to go, correct?
Councilmember Marks, let me give you an example of two projects that could, could like give you a sense of what really happens with these. We have Seventh and Church here, where you can see that the lines are painted on the concrete because we're about to put in new stop signs, lights, all that. Third and Wren is another area where we had some issues with safety. So we've, we're already doing this work.
Okay.
We're paying for it. And this, this contract proposes to do the evaluation of those intersections for us, since we're already doing it. They'll identify through traffic data, not through what, you know, somebody's subjective idea of traffic flow or congestion is. It'll use real data for traffic incidents, police reports, citations, and determine where are our worst spots in town for safety, not for congestion, transportation improvement, safety. Uh, that's why it is specifically a safety grant. That list will come out and it will have numerous projects on there, more projects than we could ever fund. Uh, so then staff would have to make a recommendation to council to do that project. And at that time, the council could either approve or not approve that project based on the merits of that individual project, not the whole plan, just the ones that we've picked that we think are more for safety and what have you.
So we're not being locked into anything?
You are not being locked into anything.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments for staff? I'll just, I'll have one comment. I like what you said about intersection safety for pedestrians and traffic. We had a meeting here, coffee with the mayor this past Saturday, and that was something that was talked about a lot. People want to know, they want better pedestrian safety and intersection safety. So that's my comment. And based on that, I'll entertain a motion on item number 6.1 on consent calendar.
A motion.
So I have a motion, I have a motion from councilmember Klein and a second by councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Count, uh, Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes five to two.
Correct.
Okay, moving along to item number seven, bids and proposals. 7.1, award a three-year contract to Swimming Swan LLC in the amount of $816,492.42 to serve as the Christopher High School Aquatic Center operator, beginning in 2025 through 2027, with a two, one-year extension options. Staff report, please.
Yes, excuse me, Mayor and council. Uh, so from 2012 to 2020, Recreation offered aquatic services at Christopher High School Aquatic Center, joint operation and service with this, uh, going to high school district. Due to pandemic closure and cost reduction efforts, the city's aquatics program ceased in 2020, um, but resumed in 2022 by using an outside vendor. An RFP was issued for an aquatics operator at the time, um, and the council awarded Swimming Swan, who operated the, the aquatic center from 2022 to 2024. A new RFP was issued to operate the center from '25 to '27, was advertised in San Jose Mercury newspaper and sent to over 100 professionals in the aquatics and recreation field. Two proposals were received, USA Management and Swimming Swan LLC. The review team found several issues with the proposal submitted by USA Management, while Swimming Swan provided a comprehensive proposal consistent with the RFP requirements. Swimming Swan's proposal maintains the pool operations as it currently serves a community's past summer season. Required services provided, uh, to be provided include group and private swim lessons and recreation swim. Offered programs include, but are not limited to, aqua yoga classes, lap swim, party rental area, and several certification and training classes. Additionally, the, under the contract, they will offer swimming lessons scholarships for economically disadvantaged Gilroy youth. Responsibilities, uh, Swimming Swan is responsible for recruiting, hiring, onboarding and training all its lifeguards, cashiers and other staffing, offering a program registration system and to provide janitorial support, among other duties at the center. Proposed fees in the public are generally similar to 2024 in their proposal, swim lessons would only increase by 2%, and recreation swim fee will remain the same as 2024. Uh, in this review, uh, council does have, uh, some alternatives. Obviously, council could reject the proposal and reissue the RFP. Um, this is not recommended, as, uh, we would not be able to open for the 2025 season due to time, uh, timeframe. Uh, second, the council could award the contract for a lesser length of time and study the city, uh, providing the service directly. Again, that, that study is, uh, it would be a big lift for staff, but it is a possibility. And third is to reject the proposal and direct staff to provide the service directly, which again, we have not studied, um, the costs or, um, requirements for reinstituting that program internally. Uh, fiscal impact, so the proposed agreement is for three years, uh, requires a management fee paid to the operator, uh, for each year, uh, for total not to exceed $816,000, roughly $500, that's split over three years. Uh, the amounts are, are included on the screen here and in your packet. Uh, they assume the maximum 5% CPI increase. Whatever the CPI is for the Bay Area, if it's under 5%, that's what they would get under this contract. After 2027, there are two one-year options to extend with city approval, and so that would come back to council before any of those options are exercised. So the recommendation is to approve, awarding the contract to Swimming Swan, and authorize the city ministry to execute the contract and associated documents. Happy to answer any questions, uh, that council may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Bracco?
Bryce, how many, how many people does this, does this serve? How many people use that pool?
Yeah, so it, uh, it varies by year, it's been increasing. Uh, inside the packet, we do have the numbers. Um, so these are not, these are not unduplicated numbers. And so, um, these are information from the operator, so, um, we have the recreation swimmers, which increased from 2022, 4,820 to 6,800. Uh, swim lessons went from 1,347 to 1,883. Each of those swim lessons are eight, eight classes. Um, and so those are the, the numbers we have. We don't have data on the other programs they offered because they're optional and not part of the report requirement of the contract that we had.
And the other contractor that you didn't select, what was their bid?
So they bid, um, 197, I want to say, in their proposal. However, the, the, the contents of that proposal were ambiguous as far as what was being provided. So there are parts in their contract that, that made it sound like we were just hiring a pool manager and that we would still be responsible for the staffing of the pool, especially they had an attached contract, which just talked about the pool supervisor. They also had their proposal at what they called the silver level and had multiple levels on top of that, that we wanted to select if we wanted to pay higher rates for the operators. It wasn't really consistent with what we were asking for in the, in the proposal, it really wasn't able to define exactly what our actual costs would be if we selected them.
So if we go with this, that's it? We're, we're paying them to completely run the swimming programs?
Correct, yes, and, and this is what they did previously.
Provide their own labor and everything.
Provided their own labor, the, the largest benefit that we have from outsourcing the pool operation is insurance. So, um, we required pretty significant insurance, $10 million policy for the pool operation because of the drowning risk and from recommendations from our, uh, pool man, pooled risk authority. Um, that insurance alone, if you looked at the proposal, was 60, I think 65,000, off the top of my head, alone just for that insurance policy. Um, so it's, it's a big lift, but even then, all that risk is carried by the provider.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes, um, so I emailed you with some, some questions, you know, and, um, I, we talked earlier today and you said you only had the revenue, um, so the question I asked was, um, when we operated it ourself, what kind of revenue did we generate? And you said you don't have quite, you don't have the net numbers, you only have the revenue.
Right, so the total revenue we received is anywhere, usually 130, the highest year was fiscal year 16, which was 200,000. But again, that's a revenue line item, we still have to analyze the expenditures and to see because it may, expenditures likely exceeded that revenue.
Okay, because things that I've been involved with before, it, the swimming program is a, is a revenue generator, that's why I ask. The other question I have is, um, it is in here that, um, in the contract that they're required, you know, to do, provide scholarships, but how is that mandated? Do we require, um, you know, um, is it based on income? Is it based on, um, you know, 20% of the population of Gilroy under 17? That's the number, I mean, how is that, is it mandated at all in any way? I guess any criteria?
It's, it's, it's stated in there as a requirement that they provide it for income-eligible, um, youth.
And who, who determines eligibility? And what is that?
Yeah, so they use a similar and the same criteria that we have for all of our youth scholarships, and so it includes, they have to be basically registered on one of the identified programs. So a couple of them, they have to be on free reduced price meals to go Unified School District or GPS, California Head Start, a letter from them, first five, Medi-Cal eligibility. So there's about six, six different requirements, that they have to be at least in one of those programs to qualify. There's a specific quota because we can't control who participates, so if we set an arbitrary number, say 10, 15, they may not reach that. So we just identified that if they qualify, then the scholarship is eligible.
And do they report back on how many scholarships they gave?
Yes, yes, so in 2024, they had, uh, 31 scholarships.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fugazi?
So thank you for your information today, because I too had, obviously, a bunch of questions, and it's not exactly obvious from the data, as, uh, councilmember Bracco was trying to get to the information, of how many Gilroy residents actually take, you know, take part in this activity out there. Looks like it could be anywhere from 2,000-ish, something in that neighborhood, from what you told me and how many turnstiles there are. So the city is effectively subsidizing about $150 maybe a year for these people to use that facility. Does that sound about correct?
I'd, I'd have to do.
Okay.
Hard math on that, so I can't confirm that, but.
And, uh, if we don't approve all the years tonight, we can approve just one?
It's, it's an option for council, if they want to get that direction, we then go back to Swimming Swan and negotiate what that agreement would look like.
And if we don't approve any of them tonight, you're saying you can't start this, this year?
Yeah, so typically, when, when the city was operating it, by December, advertisements for lifeguards are already going out, it's, it's a very intensive upstart.
So we waited till the last minute and we're right up against the wall now?
Uh, it's, it's followed the process that we did previously. Um, so we had, we did the RFP through the last cycle. Um, we heard positive, uh, responses from the, about the vendor and the community, Recreation does, and after each, each season, they end up doing a survey of participants to find out. And so we can follow with that consistent policy and the approach that we took last year to do the RFP at the same time.
So to be clear, this company is, it's a revenue generator for them, right? They make money off of this in addition to what we give them as a subsidy?
So we provide a management fee to, to the vendors, this is something we uncovered with the first process. So when we went out and for the 2022 season to start, we originally put out an RFP, they didn't have any management fee in at all. We received zero responses.
Sure.
We then went out, I think a second time, offered 50,000, still no responses. And so we opened it up and to, to the proposals, well, what would make it work? And so that was part of the proposals that we received. Um, even then, we were still received three proposals at that time.
And 2024 over 2023 had about a 30% increase in activity, right? That's what I saw, it was about 8,000 and change in your numbers from 6,000 and change, something like that.
Yes.
And if it went up to 10,000, they would conceivably be making even more money and need less money from us, wouldn't they?
I, I wouldn't be able to speculate on what their profit margins are and what, what their expenses are and that.
Fair enough. That's it.
Further com, yeah, councilmember Hilton?
I just want to interject some, some historical, um, uh, position on this, because, um, during COVID, and maybe there's other people in there who could probably help out, but during COVID, we stopped this, and then there was the needs assessment that we did for the recreation department, um, we stopped funding, we stopped giving those subsidies. So it just, when I hear words like that, I always want to be careful that that's, that wasn't the point of, of this. The point of this was, um, i- in my opinion, and others can correct me too, was to, to eliminate, um, you know, that, give it to another company, but if they make, whatever their profits end up being is their profits, but it wasn't to, like, give $150 per person or have that type of credit to, like, subsidize it, that wasn't the, that wasn't the original intent, and that's why we stopped hiring and stopped using our own volunteers and stopped, you know, creating our own lifeguard program, but, but completely gave it away. So hopefully someone else can, I wasn't really prepared to talk too much about that, but hopefully we can bring that back into the conversation. Because that, that definitely wasn't the, the, the purpose, is to subsidize or.
Purpose or not, it's effectively that, and effectively, that number should go down with the more money that they make. I mean, if they, if they did 20,000, uh, visits there, would they need any money at all from us?
Yeah, so, and, and I, I'm definitely, I'm in line with you, because I was in line back then on, on why we, why we changed it and why we went down this road. Um, but I don't know, I don't know how you could build in a public contract, um, like that, by telling them like, "Yeah, but if you don't get, if you don't, if you don't get this, you don't need us, then we're going to take our money back." I don't, I don't know how that's possible, but, but I, but I, I, I do like what you're saying, because this is not what we were supposed to be doing. We weren't supposed to be giving away excess money to a, a, a company, um.
Right, but we do have a contract like that with Gilroy Gardens, it's based on EBITDA. So we, we do know how it is to write contracts, like, I'm not saying we should on this, but it does exist, and, uh, the timing is, is difficult going into budgeting, when we should be looking at all things that, uh, that we're spending money on, especially $300,000 a year, uh, when that's the equivalent of public, you know, safety staff and, and other things. I'm not saying that we get rid of this, I'm saying that in looking at the way the contract is, is created, I'm reticent to want to give a three-year contract without looking at it much deeper and also engaging the community in terms of the budget and what they really want to spend what we have as fixed dollars on.
I'd just like to add a couple of things from back in COVID as well. Uh, as you may recall, the recreation budget used to be approximately.
2.7.
2.7 million dollars, and that was cut down to 1.5 in 2022. As part of that, it was decided by the council to have a, basically a fixed cost for what the swimming program was going, was going to cost, because there was basically zero, uh, cost recovery of swimming. So, and maybe in some places they have higher levels, and so that was a conscious decision to set the, the amount of investment, uh, into the swimming program as a community benefit. It's never been looked at from a financial gain or loss. Now, having said that, when we went out with the RFP and we tried to get a vendor on the merits of profit and loss, we got no responses. So that's why that management fee came in place, it was not a place of a power of negotiation from our side, it was the only way we could get the services provided, and that was the amount that we could get somebody in at. So, uh, there's a lot of different ways to do this, but it just depends on what your goal is. If your goal is to provide swimming, then this is the way that we did it, uh, but if your, 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 your goal is for cost recovery or reallocation of resources, it's an entirely different conversation for us.
Yeah, I think it's not about whether or not we do it or that that wasn't good at the time, I think it's just the way we're going about it now, and then also coming up on, on budgeting, i- as far as, especially with the new council, all things considered. Um, and it's, uh, difficult to, to think that, uh, you know, also we're right up against the wall on this and, and we're kind of give it or don't give it. So the, the less than three-year option would be interesting to hear about.
Could we, uh, look at that, do in extending this current lease for one more year, and in the meantime, come back?
It, it's an option we can take if we have direction, but we would have to get agreement from Swimming Swan if they were willing to do a one-year contract.
And, and I think that would, that would send the message to Swimming Swan that we, we, we've enjoyed your partnership over the last three years, right? You, you, they, they have figured out who to hire within our city, so they have, they have had that, that transition that we used to get on our own, like, they used to call, you know, the recs, the, our own rec staff and say, "Hey, next year my little brother or my little sister wants to do it." Well, now they have those abilities, but I, what I, what I think we don't want to send the message to the community is that, is that maybe possibly rec swimming at Christopher High School is on the chopping block, right? I don't think that's what you're trying to.
Absolutely, no, that's not what I'm trying to indicate, I'm.
That's what I'm saying, like, I want the message to be like, "Hey, we want to work with you, we don't, don't quite like this, but at the same time, we want to provide swimming, that's not, we're not trying to not provide swimming."
For sure, there's, there's not enough information to, you know, to, to make that long-term decision, in my, in my feeling on the way that, that it's set up and the way that the, uh, the, the contract is designed and all of those things, I think it's, uh, I think it's valid, but I think when you talk about, that now we have to go back to Swimming Swan, that means you guys are going to have to come back to us, it's going to have to come up at another meeting, which means we're not exactly against the wall or we could have gone to another meeting, but that's beside the point.
But what we can do is entertain a motion this evening for one year, and if Swimming Swan agrees to it, then we can do that. So I, I did see folks nod their head a few times when the one-year, uh, idea came up, and is there additional comments?
We have public comments here.
Yeah, um.
You have public comments.
Thank you.
When you take this whole thing into perspective, and you add the insurance and all the labor and everything, I don't think that's a bad price. And, and it's doing what we want it to, and so I, I don't want to do a one-year contract, I, because what'll happen then, the second year, this number's going to go way up, as we've seen on other stuff that we've postponed. So I, I would advise against postponing it, and I think it's a, a fair amount to move forward with.
So I'm just going to say, I think that, um, you know, I think what I'm understanding, Terrence, is you would like the opportunity to, um, give direction to staff to explore other options, including in-house, um, if, you know, moving forward so we can look at the budget.
Not in-house, not in-house, I, whether, whether it is explore more option for another vendor, or it's simply the structuring of the contract in such a way that, uh, our management fee is not ultimately fixed, it just, it doesn't make a ton of business sense to me. That's just, that's pretty much it, and, uh, you know, three years on it, I don't know that it's going to go up either necessarily, um, because if our, because if our swim goes up to 10,000 or 12,000 people and swim, the revenue number goes up as well.
Or at that time, you can renegotiate, we can renegotiate that. So let's move into public comment.
We have one speaker, Luis Ramirez, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, come to you in my capacity as a single member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, it was made, I was made aware of the vote today when I read the agenda, so I figured I should chime in on how I personally feel. Uh, it is apparent from my reading of the packet materials that, uh, there isn't much choice but to vote, at least for this particular year, um, if we want to have a swim program this summer. Uh, what did become apparent to me as I read this, as I did the math, is there, you know, this, this particular year is 259,000. If you just did some simple math on the fees that we collect, um, that, that the contractor collects for the, just the swim lessons, 1,883 at $123, a person roughly, and nothing else, that brings that to about 229,000. So we're talking about almost half a million dollars that they're collecting to run a program that's three months, from late, late May to the end of August. To me, that seems like something we can do something with. Uh, I like the suggestion of taking this back, approving it for one year, because we need to, we need to get the swim, swim program going. Let's take this back and let's study another alternative, whether it's revising a contract for the following year at the risk of maybe, uh, causing an increase in the contract price, or why not take it back in-house? It's been five years since we dismantled our Parks and Rec Department. I think now with a civic center coming, there's, uh, there should be a mindset that we should start thinking about city services like Parks and Rec. Uh, again, I'm biased that direction, but, uh, there is momentum from people that want to see more rec programs, and rec programs done by us, and 122 bucks is expensive for a lot of our people. $300 for a soccer program is expensive for a lot of our folks, it's because we're contracting that out, and those contractors have to make money. This particular contract has $194,000 for a management fee. That's a lot of money that we can put to staff. So my recommendation is to approve this year because we need it, get an option for another year and take it back in-house, and study what it would cost for us to do that. Thank you for that.
Any additional comments?
I just have one additional comment, uh, staff can take it or not, but, um, it's, it's just fascinating to be on this side now where we've got members of the public saying, um, you know, that we should take this back in-house, which I'm all for that. I, I thought it was a great program, but I would love to hear staff's either pushback to that or neutral to that or s- something, I don't know. I mean, you, you were here when we, when we, mostly everyone in this room was here when we made this choice of, "We don't want to have this as a staff member, we want to contract this out," so I'm just interested to hear that.
Yeah, economically, it's, it's, I, I don't have the data, it's going to be much more expensive. Uh, the management fee that we're paying will probably pay for an employee and a half, uh, if we're able to find a pool manager. Actually, one of the reasons why we did go out is because we just couldn't find anybody to take that four, five, six-month job, uh, as the pool manager. Uh, so it certainly, I don't think the cost is going to go down by any means. Um, it's, it's hard to find temporary seasonal employees for lifeguards, and we don't have as great access to those kinds of labor fields that, uh, Swimming Swan or other companies do, so, um, there was a, to be honest with you, the reason why we, we wanted to get rid of it, because we weren't very good at it, to be honest with you.
So can I ask, who, who? So, can I ask, who did they employ then? Did they bring someone up from San Diego? Did they bring lifeguards up from San Diego? Or if they, if they had the contract and then they did hire a pool manager and lifeguards and staff, where did, where did they pull those people from? I just made the assumption, I'm bad on me for assuming, but I just assumed that they hired local.
There's a large component of that, but hiring local through a government agency is a much more onerous process than an independent contractor. We do background checks. We do all kinds of benefits and things like that that just really take the process a lot longer, and this gives us flexibility. And it takes away from our responsibility because right now we only have five employees in Recreation. So, in order to bring the swimming program back, you would have to expand the Recreation Department. That's just a fact.
Seems like there's some interest in a one-year contract. So, I'm going to entertain a motion for a one-year contract. Is there any interest?
Motion?
I'll second.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Ramirez to award a three, a one-year contract to Swimming Swan LLC to serve as the Christopher High School Aquatic Center Operator in the year 2025 in the total amount of $258,998.39.
Would it be, excuse me, Mayor, could, could we just extend the current lease or, Jimmy, in negotiating with them, just, just extending this, this current lease?
So, the current lease, the current agreement, I think, ended this past year. So, yeah, it's already, it's already
Okay.
Everybody okay with that motion? Rule call, please.
Councilmember Barco?
No.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion approved, six to one. Moving along to public hearings? Nope. Item number nine, unfinished business, selection and appointment of boards and commissions and committee members. I'd just like to make a quick comment for all of the applicants. I want to, the council would like to thank you guys again for going through this process and applying. There were a lot of applications, and for some reason, if you're not selected to a committee or commission that you've applied for, please continue to search out and look for ways to become involved in Gilroy. This community needs you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bozo. Mayor, try this again, Bozo. I have the tallies in for each of the boards and commissions. Several of them did not receive majority for enough, so we probably have to ask to go back again. Starting with the library commission, Councilmember Barco voted for Valerie Lowry and Victoria Coverson Baxter. Councilmember Fugazi voted for those also. Councilmember Marks, Hilton, Ramirez, Klein, and Mayor Bozo all voted for Valerie Lowry and Victoria Coverson Baxter. So, those two have seven. Councilmember Hilton voted for Stephen Taylor. No others did. Councilmember Ramirez voted for Jeannie Stokes and Joanne Howell. And Mayor Bozo voted for Stephen Taylor. So, Stephen Taylor got two votes. Jeannie Stokes and Joanne Howell each got one vote. So, we have four openings and we have two confirmed that we can do, appoint to the committee.
So, would you like to take care of this on a case-by-case per commission basis? Are you going through all of them?
It's up to you. Do you want me to do it case-by-case and if somebody wants to change their vote right now?
Sure, case-by-case.
Okay. So, for the library commission, as just stated, Stephen Taylor got two votes. Jeannie Stokes and Joanne Howell got one vote each.
If Stephen Taylor wins for library commission, he will be on two different commissions at that point then, right?
No, he will be only on one.
What did I miss?
He on
On arts and culture is his second choice. He will automatically be eliminated from that once he's elected to the librarian commission.
His first choice is the library commission. His second choice was arts and culture, and he did receive five votes for arts and culture. Could we, well, could we go through and do all the ones that definitely got appointed? And then the people that didn't make it, can they all reapply to different commissions that would be their second choice or third choice?
Anybody can reapply later if this council, when and if this council decides that we're going to go back out to recruitment. But I don't think that we should have that conversation tonight.
Correct. And we did, you did hold two sets of interviews so that everybody could. And we extended the time period for them to apply.
So
Do you want to look at library commission if there's anybody else? Basically, Stephen Taylor is out because he got five votes on arts and culture. So, the only two left would be Jeannie Stokes and Joanne Howell. Even with the two here, they would not have a quorum. Well, they would. They'd have a quorum of three, of a five-member.
Okay. So, to review, if we only select two people for the library commission, there will be a quorum unless members of this council want to change their vote.
Correct.
And try to add one more person.
Correct.
So, essentially, what we, what we would be asking for the folks that did not vote for, that only, that only had two votes, are they going to consider the two people at the bottom, Jeannie and Joanne, will they be considered?
Correct.
Did both of them interview?
Neither of them interviewed.
There's not, yeah. The, the, the letters that are in, that are not in bold did not interview on your list. So, down here on my left, no interest at this point? Okay, so we will, so
We will appoint Valerie Lowry and Victoria Coverson Baxter to the library commission.
Correct.
Moving on to arts and culture commission, we have Stephen Porter, or we have Councilmember Barco voting for Stephen Taylor and Wendy Zamora. Councilmember Fugazi voting for Stephen Porter, Stephen Taylor, and Wendy Zamora. Councilmember Marks voting for Stephen Porter, Stephen Taylor, and Wendy Zamora. Councilmember Hilton voting for Stephen Porter, Stephen Taylor, Wendy Zamora. Councilmember Ramirez voting for Stephen Porter, Wendy Zamora, Jeanette Becarelli, and Kelly Pfeiffer. Councilmember Klein voting for Stephen Porter, Stephen Taylor, and Wendy Zamora. Mayor Bozo voting for Stephen Porter and Wendy Zamora. We have, Stephen Porter received six votes. Stephen Taylor received five votes, and Wendy Zamora received seven. So, we have three who have, who got a majority of the council votes.
Okay.
But there's four openings.
Right. But Valerie, the first name Valerie is no longer
Correct.
Correct? Because she's on library commission?
Correct.
So, we have a similar situation. Does anybody want to change, add their vote for the folks that did not interview? Nope? Then that vote stands.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to open government, Councilmember Barco voted for Janet Crewley, Anne Marie McCauley, and Sharpey Sandu. Councilmember Fugazi voted for Janet Crewley, Anne Marie McCauley. Councilmember Marks voted for Janet Crewley and Sharpey Sandu. Councilmember Hilton voted for Anne Marie McCauley and Sharpey Sandu. Councilmember Ramirez voted for Janet Crewley, Sharpey Sandu, and Monica O'Neil. Councilmember Klein voted for Janet Crewley, Anne Marie McCauley, and Sharpey Sandu. Mayor Bozo voted for Janet Crewley, Anne Marie McCauley, and Sharpey Sandu. Jeanette Crewley got six votes. Anne Marie McCauley, five votes. And Sharpey Sandu, six votes. So, we have three that are appointed to the three open positions.
Thank you.
Moving on to Parks and Rec Commission, Councilmember Barco voted for Michael Vesuzzi, Javier Martinez, Jorge Vargas, and Robert Miller. Councilmember Fugazi voted for Michael Vesuzzi, Emily Miller, Javier Martinez, and Jorge Vargas. Councilmember Marks voted for Jesse Jimenez, Javier Martinez, Jorge Vargas, and Nathaniel Ayala. Councilmember Hilton voted for Michael Vesuzzi, Emily Miller, Javier Martinez, and Jorge Vargas. Councilmember Ramirez voted for Jesse Jimenez, Emily Miller, Javier Martinez, and Jorge Vargas. Councilmember Klein voted for Jesse Jimenez, Michael Vesuzzi, Javier Martinez, and Jorge Vargas. Mayor Bozo voted for Jesse Jimenez, Emily Miller, Javier Martinez, Nathaniel Ayala. Javier Martinez and Jorge Vargas. Javier Martinez got seven votes. Jorge Vargas got six. We have a tie between Jesse Jimenez, Michael Vesuzzi, and Emily Miller as they all received four.
And we're looking for four spots. Yeah, we're looking for four spots.
Yep. So, council's going to have to decide between the three that received four votes if somebody wants to change their vote. Jesse Jimenez, Michael Vesuzzi, and Emily Miller.
All right, folks.
And they all interviewed, right?
They all interviewed.
So, but, so essentially, at this point, Beth or you guys, is this a runoff? We're all voting again, all over again?
What I, what I was just thinking of asking those who voted for, the two that did not get many votes, Councilmember Barco voted for Robert Miller. Councilmember Marks voted for Nathaniel Ayala. Mayor Bozo voted for Nathaniel Ayala. One of you three need to change your vote. To Okay, so Emily has five. We need one more between Jesse Jimenez, Michael Vesuzzi, and that would be Mayor Bozo or Councilmember Marks.
Jesse.
So, Jesse has five also now. So, the four appointed to the commission are Jesse Jimenez, Emily Miller, Javier Martinez, and Jorge Vargas.
Thank you.
Moving on to the personnel commission, Councilmember Barco voted for Catherine Cummins, Linda Allen, and Norma Hingle Flores. Councilmember Fugazi voted for Linda Allen, Sharpey Sandu. Councilmember Marks voted for Catherine Cummins, Linda Allen, and Anne Marie McCauley. Councilmember Hilton voted for Catherine Cummings and Linda Allen. Councilmember Ramirez voted for Catherine Cummins, Linda Allen, and Norma Hingle Flores. Councilmember Klein voted for Catherine Cummins and Linda Allen. Mayor Bozo voted for Catherine Cummins, Linda Allen, Anne Marie McCauley, and Sharpey Sandu. Catherine Cummins received six votes. Linda Allen received seven. Anne Marie McCauley, Sharpey Sandu, and Norma Hingle all got three votes. So, we need one more.
So, just as a reminder, Anne Marie McCauley and Sharpey Sandu have both already been elected to open government.
Yep.
So, essentially, that would take them off the list. And the other person did not interview. So, unless we're going to change the way we've been doing it.
Cummings and Allen?
Cummings and Allen.
Yep. Physically challenged appeal board, Councilmember Fugazi voted for Marco. Councilmember Marks, Ramirez, Hilton, and Klein all voted for Marco Machado. So, he has four votes, which is not a majority.
Why not?
Yes, it is.
Four
One, two, three, four votes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it is.
He is a majority.
I'm sorry. Yes, he did.
Is it okay?
My mistake. Planning commission, Councilmember Barco, I'll go through the full first and then the partial. Councilmember Barco voted for Brian Danhauer, full, part, full term. Councilmember Fugazi voted for Brian, full term. Council Ramirez voted for Brian, full term. Councilmember Klein voted for Brian, full term. Mayor Bozo voted for Brian, full term. So, Brian Danhauer gets the full term. For partial term, Councilmember Barco voted for Patricia Benson. Councilmember Fugazi voted for Alex Larson. Councilmember Hilton voted for Janet Crewley. Councilmember Ramirez voted for Pat Benson. Councilmember Klein voted for Pat Benson. And Mayor Bozo voted for Alex Larson. We do not have a majority for the part-time position.
Beth, you might want to explain why you skipped me. Because people might think I didn't vote for
Oh, you voted full-time. Yeah, you voted for Patricia for the full-time.
Right.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
So, she voted, oh, for Patricia Benson for the full-time.
And I did Brian part-time.
Yes.
I could switch my vote to Pat for part-time. I mean, not part-time, the, the
Partial.
So, then we have Brian Danhauer with four votes for full-time and Pat Benson with four for the part-time, partial.
Thank you.
For the youth commission, we had two openings and all council member voted, voted for Sean Ethan Deep and Dan Masarath, so they will be appointed to the youth commission.
All right. Thank you very much for crunching all those numbers. Okay, moving on. Item number 10, introduction of new business. Item 10.1, review of the City Council norms, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council originally adopted its first norms back in 2011, and several revisions have occurred from the past 14 years with the last update being two years ago by that current council. The council norms are intended to establish procedures and expectations for the conduct of council. It is advisable that council review occasionally the norms and update as, as necessary. There are six different categories of council norms, including meeting guidelines, adding agenda items, council interactions, staff relations, council communications, and council travel and training and participation on outside boards and memberships. Staff has made some recommendations for adjustments to the council norms, and those are included in your packet. I would say the majority of those are administrative that just reflect current policies and practices and a few language adjustments as well. At this time, council can accept staff recommendations, and they can also add, edit, or modify any of their own, and will take that direction from council tonight and return at a future meeting for the adoption of the updated council norms. That concludes my report. Thank you.
So, before I open to questions from council, just as a reminder, this, we're not taking action on this tonight. We'll be doing discussion and then a public comment, of course, and then give direction. That's the goal of tonight, not action. So, any questions so far for staff? None? Okay, moving on. A public comment, please.
We have one speaker, Gary Walton, and you'll have three minutes.
We will never bring disgrace to this, our city by an act of dishonesty or cowardice. We will fight for the ideals and sacred things We will fight for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with many. We will revere and obey the city's laws and do our best to incite a like respect and reverence in those above us who are prone to null them or set them at naught. We will strive unceasingly to quicken the public sense of civic duty. Thus, in all these ways, we will transmit this city not only not less, but greater and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us. We will never, we will never bring disgrace to this city by an act of dishonesty or cowardice. I think I repeated that. But these words were spoken in the fifth century B.C. by young Athenian citizens. Century go reflected a pledge, not just of service, but of integrity and responsibility and leadership. Today, the city of Gilroy faces similar challenges. How to ensure that all those entrusted with public service, elected officials, city management, staff uphold these same principles of ethical leadership and responsibility. Council norms, as discussed tonight, guide meetings, conducts, and encourage professionalism. Likewise, city staff follow internal policies and professional standards, but norms and policies set expectations, not enforceable ethical standards. Gilroy's public servants already follow strict ethical codes through the ICMA, AICP, APWA, IACP, and the IAFC, professional organizations that demand high ethical standards for their designation. Yet Gilroy itself has no unified code of ethics. Out of 16 cities in Santa Clara County, and I did this several years ago, and I won't get into, tell you why I looked into it, but Gilroy is only one of three without one. This is a critical gap that must be addressed to align our city with the best practices in municipal government. Gilroy deserves a government that is not only effective, but ethical at every level. Adopting a comprehensive code of conduct will reaffirm the city's commitment to integrity, good governance, and public trust. Now is the time to take this step and ensure that ethical leadership in Gilroy is just not encouraged, but expected. I strongly encourage the city council to prioritize the development of a code of ethics as part of your upcoming retreat. The Athenian oath speaks of leaving the city better than we found it. This is your opportunity to do just that. By establishing a clear set of ethical guidelines, you create a lasting foundation for future councils and staff, ensuring that integrity, accountability, and transparency remain at the heart of Gilroy's governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments, questions from council? Any direction? Okay, moving on.
I'll make some, because I think that, I think what staff's looking for is the recommended update, the cleanup items of just general policy stuff. So I would, I would, I would give that direction, as long as everybody else is willing to do that, that we at least bring, when that, when it gets brought back, that those get included inside of it. Because there are a lot of cleanup stuff.
Okay.
Thank you, Seth, for doing that.
Thank you for helping with it.
So the directions to move forward with the staff recommended updates. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number 11. We are now going to adjourn to the meeting of the Gilroy Public Facilities and Financing Authority. So moving on to item number 12, we're going to open the Gilroy Public Facilities Finance Authority. Does anyone want to comment on it?
No.
Okay. So roll call, please.
Board member Bracco?
Here.
Board member Fugazi?
Here.
Board member Marks?
Here.
Board member Hilton?
Here.
Board member Ramirez?
Here.
Board member Klein?
Here.
Chair Bozo?
Here.
Okay, item, item 13, and the consent calendar of the Gilroy Public Facilities Financing Authority, 13.1 and 13.2. Is there a presentation? Staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The, the city of Gilroy City Council entered into a JPA with itself as the Public Facilities Financing Authority in 1994. As part of the JPA requirements, the financing authority is required to have a meeting annually to adopt a budget, which today's recommendation is no expenditures and no revenues, and, and also a budget for administrative expenses, which there are none. For those of you who are not aware exactly what the financing authority is, it is a mechanism for the financing authority to issue bonds that does not commit the taxes or the taxpayers of the city of Gilroy. If you were to do that, you would have to go to the ballot with a general obligation bond. So any default of the bonds is a responsibility of the, the authority, and is, the collateral is the asset, not the taxation. So it's a mechanism that most cities use to issue revenue bonds or lease bonds or those kinds of things. But this is a requirement for the, according to the annual JPA resolution. That concludes my report.
Questions, comments for staff? Public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Last chance of questions. Okay, we're moving on. We're going to do this in two separate motions. So I'm going to entertain motion number one, which is the approve the action minutes of the March 4th, 2024 Gilroy Public Facilities Financing Authority meeting.
I'll motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Klein and a second from Councilmember Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Board member Bracco?
Yes.
Board member Fugazi?
Yes.
Board member Marks?
Yes.
Board member Hilton?
Aye.
Board member Ramirez?
Yes.
Board member Klein?
Yes.
Chair Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. I'll entertain in a second motion to adopt the resolution setting the budget for fiscal year 2024 through 2026.
So...
Excuse me, 25 to 26. Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Marks. Looking for a second? And a second from Councilmember Bracco. Roll call, please.
Board member Bracco?
Yes.
Board member Fugazi?
Yes.
Board member Marks?
Yes.
Board member Hilton?
Aye.
Board member Ramirez?
Yes.
Board member Klein?
Yes.
Chair Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. We will now adjourn back to the meeting of the Gilroy City Council and the council members. Item number 15, future council-initiated agenda items. We have none. Item number 16, city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. One is agendised here. It's a Santa Teresa Fire Station update. We expect to finish the last remnants of escrow this week, and once the land is recorded, we will finish that process. We were waiting on signatures from the other party, but that appears to not be an issue now. And so next week, we will commence the Internal Committee for Capital Improvement Project and get started on reviewing the previously completed design and plans for the fire station and look to see what any updates we need for that, those plans, and get ready to start the project as we would most of our projects. A second, we received some good news on Friday from Santa Clara County. On the February 4th Board of Supervisor meeting, county staff is recommending to the Board of Supervisors that they approve a contract with the Santa Clara County Housing Authority regarding the development of the Eighth and Alexander. If you recall, the city of Gilroy Council approved an MOU for the Eighth and Alexander site for affordable housing back in 2022. It has been with the county pretty much since, and so if the Board of Supervisors agree, they will have an agreement with the Santa Clara County Housing Authority to begin development of that property. That will be a very public process and one that has not kicked off yet, but that is a good step for a, some bond money that was allocated towards Gilroy for some more, for some more affordable housing. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item number 17, city attorneys' report.
I have no report at this time, but I'd be happy to lead us into the closed sessions.
Please.
Right. My understanding is 18.1 and 18.2 are not going to occur tonight.
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. Then we have item 18.3, which is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D, paragraph three of subdivision E of Government Code, section 54956.9, Gilroy City Code, section 17A113B. Based upon receipt of a written communication from Shankman &amp; Hughes, PC, available for inspection upon request at the office of the city clerk, one case as defended. Then there's a second closed session, item 18.4, Conference of Real Property Negotiators, Government Code, section 54956.8, Gilroy City Code, section 17AA8. The properties are APNs 84110010 and 84110028. Negotiator is Jimmy Forbes, a city administrator. The other party is Jessup Roberta A. Trustee, Jessup Transportation, Inc. Price and terms of payment are under negotiation. So the process now is that with respect to, well, let's first ask for public comment, actually, is the next step.
Public comment.
All right. Then with respect to the litigate, anticipated litigation, I will advise you as your attorney that it would prejudice the position of the city to discuss this matter in open session, and therefore I recommend that we go into closed session. And so it is appropriate now to take a vote on whether or not to go into closed session.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Passes seven zero.
Right. So we will now go into closed session, and the first item when we go in is to take a vote whether or not to remain in closed session for the other item. That would be a reportable action.
Okay.
So now we're entering the closed session.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.